All right, we're going to call our meeting to order. Five P M. September twenty second, two thousand twenty twenty five. I'd like to turn it over to the Home Building Association of Richmond. So please introduce yourself. Tell us what you what you got for us.
Thank you. I thank you for having me. My name is Elizabeth Greenfield. I'm with the Home Building Association of Richmond. We represent builders and developers and all the various trades that support land development and home building in the Richmond region. So contractors, electricians, engineers, architects. We're not just builders and developers. We represent a wide variety of folks. And our association covers the plan R V A footprint, which obviously includes Powhatan. So I'm here today just to give you a little update of what is happening in the new construction market. When I met with Mr. Haydie to introduce myself to him a couple of months ago, I he mentioned that, you know, you don't need a one on one. I think everyone's very familiar with the fact that we have a housing shortage and prices are high. I'm here to tell you a little bit of what that looks like from the new construction side, not just from Powhatan, but the region. And then also, perfect timing. I know folks are watching on YouTube and can't see me hold this up, but your county came out with this this study. So this was a great place for me to start, to leave you guys with some some food for thought. I really didn't need to because it's already there. So and at the start of the meeting, Mr. Haydie mentioned this was like a homecoming for me. I grew up in Powhatan. My family has been here for generations. Many are still here. In fact, I've used this opportunity to come visit an uncle and some cousins on my way out here. So I don't live here now, but I'm very familiar with the county. Went to the Powhatan County Schools. So it's nice to be back in different capacity. So I tend to talk fast, so stop me. Some of my slides are number heavy and they're hard to read, so I gave you printouts to to see the data and we'll make sure that the shiplet gets it so that it's captured on the public record. But again, anytime, just stop me. So the current market conditions, new construction resale, and this is not something specific to Powhatan or the region, it is nationwide. We have extremely low inventory, increased demand, more buyers than we have homes, and that is causing escalated prices as are many other economic factors, which we'll get into in the presentation. To give you a little idea of what the sales prices are like in central Virginia, again, this is mirroring the plan R V A footprint. So new construction, you'll actually see a slight decrease, and these numbers cover January to June, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five. So you'll see a slight decrease in new construction over the past year, but an uptick in the price of resale. I asked some of our builders, how are we seeing a decrease in new construction while it's, you know, just a little over one percent? I think our folks have said because there's so little inventory and a lot of what is selling, particularly in the more suburban suburban jurisdictions or townhomes, and their prices are a little bit lower comparatively to some other resale that we're seeing.
Those numbers based off of what square footage typically is your average?
That's just the average. It's the average sale price of a single family home. So it's, you know, I could get granular and give you square footage, but that's just taking an average.
Understood.
And these are Powhatan's numbers. And Powhatan specific, breaking from the region, you are seeing your prices increase. You know, I talked to our data gentleman that works at the home builders a little bit before this presentation and some of our builders, and that has a lot to do with lot supply and inventory, just there's so little of it. So few lots still available in the county. And again, you're going to find that that's not just a Powhatan problem, so this is not calling Powhatan out, but we're in the county and want to give you your data.
But just on the Powhatan numbers.
Let me go back. Yes, sir.
I would see the new construction probably is more expensive here than Richmond because the lot sizes are bigger.
Absolutely, absolutely. You do see higher numbers compared to the regions. I would say if you're going to take a region wide average, including the city of Richmond, your suburban and your rural counties and cram them all together, you're probably going to see around five fifteen, five twenty is the average single family. Powhatan, Butchland, New Kent are going to be in that higher six hundred. You're you're if single family detached, you're probably not going to find anything under five hundred in the region. You're still seeing some townhomes come in and, you know, the three to four hundreds, say in Chesterfield and in Reiko. And in Reiko, one of the reasons they're only able to get them down that low is because they have that Affordable Housing Trust Fund program, which I'm happy to address if you have questions. But yes, their lot sizes definitely draw up that price. So this is the chart that's really hard to see. So I gave you a printout of it. This is the the number of units that have been rezoned since two thousand seventeen to date, with a little caveat that King William County, their numbers start from two thousand twenty three going forward, even though that's not in the plan R V A footprint. We have some members who are starting to do data there, so we started to track King William. But what this largely shows is that our number of rezonings has set up until the pandemic, which that was a little odd. No one can really figure out what happened in the pandemic, other than everyone panicked and we needed to build more homes and because people no longer had to live, you know, where they worked and they could move to outlying areas, they could work remotely, people were, you know, doing renovations. But largely what we've been seeing is that our rezonings have been kind of steadily declining through, you know, from after the pandemic. And the reason why that's important in Powhatan is third from the bottom. You'll see that, you know, we rezoned, we're saying, single family units here are in the red, multifamilies in the blue, but combined, and I think Powhatan just stays with single family, you had about thirty three, and then you've been going down. And these rezonings are anything on the single family side that is a single family detached townhome or condo. It can be an A D U, any type of any zoning that put an actual housing dwelling into the market. And the reason why this worries us is because if you look historically from two thousand seventeen to date, we've only approved about twenty three hundred lots, but we're pulling a little over forty thousand of those lots out of inventory, meaning we're permitting, building, and selling, and we're leaving a deficit of seventeen thousand three hundred ninety five. So the the concern here is that we already have a lot shortage. If you were to talk to any builder or developer, they would tell you we have not caught up from the two thousand eight market crash, that we are still operating in a deficit in terms of getting new homes put on the ground. And even with that, we're rezoning less, pulling more out of inventory than we're putting back in. So we're just digging ourselves a deeper hole. And again, this is not Powhatan specific. These numbers cover the whole region. If we continue to operate at this pace, meaning if we pull the same number, you know, permits out over the next few years, we're continuing to grow that deficit by thirty six, almost thirty seven thousand lots. And, you know, people say, where where is everyone coming from? Well, it's population growth. It's new people moving here. It's as a region, we attract really good jobs, good workforce, good talent, whether it's Lego or Lily or Amazon or, you know, Luckstone does an expansion, you name it. We're bringing new jobs here, which brings people, and then we just have general population growth. So again, the the deficit concerns us because we already see prices escalating. A big piece of that is because of lack of supply. If we don't catch that pipeline up, we're just going to continue to dig.
Mr. Chairman, so do these numbers reflect lots that have been rezoned but never built on?
Yes. And there are a number of those, and sometimes it's because maybe the infrastructure's not there. You know, maybe they need wetland and stream credit for mitigation credits, and and that takes a long time to get. It could be that they were rezoned at a time where they might have been financially feasible. We saw a lot of rezonings happen maybe before the market crash, and then when the market came back to life, some of those deals financially just didn't make sense.
But the numbers would be a little off, though, because you'd have an approved lot, but you wouldn't have a building permit pulled.
Correct.
So it actually could be a little better than these numbers reflect. So if I got, how many vacant lots did we have in Powhatan that were rezoned?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. These numbers are only capturing two thousand seventeen to twenty five. So yes, you could have some that have been rezoned, but a lot of them that are sitting there prior to seventy five are not a big portion of this number.
Now, we just pulled a recent inventory of lots that have been rezoned, ready to build, but no permits have ever been pulled.
Yeah. Yeah, you could, I mean, that that is a good point. If we started moving on some of those, that could make that deficit look better. But my point is, is some of those are sitting for a reason. Some of them may just need to be rezoned under today's conditions. Some of them may just someone needs to pay for the infrastructure.
That, I think, that's.
That's a big one. It could be an environmental reason. But yes, if we did start moving on some of those lots, then that those numbers could look different and hopefully better. If you were to ask one of our members, and this is kind of how worried they are about lots, they would say, if it's buildable and financially feasible, we'd be building on it. So I'm sorry for the, thank you for the question. So this is from our external partner market site, who, Mr. Powers, I believe you heard this presentation where we had that regional discussion. And they look at month's supply. Kind of in in the real estate world, everyone says a healthy market supply is six months. That means if you have six months of inventory, that's enough, you know, for your stuff to capture those buying homes. Right now, Powhatan has about two point seven months, so we don't have a healthy supply of inventory. In the region, you're looking at about two point two. So again, this is, this is not just a Powhatan problem. We don't have enough inventory. If you look at what that means in terms of total deficit, at the pace that you are selling homes right now, whether it's new sale, or excuse me, new construction or resale, the pace that you're selling those, you would need about two, those are, that's a six month supply in the circle, so times that by two, you would need about two hundred forty six lots available, built on, ready to sell today to get to you a six month healthy, quote unquote, healthy supply of inventory. And at the current pace of absorption, even if you have those homes built today, you would probably absorb them within twelve months because of the amount of people getting homes. So I mentioned that the lot inventory, or excuse me, the lot deficit worries us. Oftentimes, I hear, my own family included, saying, again, where are these people coming from? I see all these housing units. I see all these apartments coming up on Hall Street and and sixty, and how can we have a housing shortage? This is a ten year process from finding land and going through negotiation, diligence, entitlement, lot sales, your construction, your financing, your site plan, building permit, all the way to home purchase. That can take about ten years. And our president Chad Joyce with Joyce Realty, he he gave a speech at our legislative breakfast earlier this year. He had that exact thing happen. Hundred lots, hundred homes, took him nine and a half years to get through that process, from the time he found the land until the time that he built that home. Nine and a half years for a hundred lots, hundred homes. So think about if you're already undersupplied and then you're taking, even if, you know, ten years, and some, a lot of this is out of the board's control. By the time it gets to you, it's what, entitlement zoning, you know, that's whether you pass or fail. But even so, it can take many, many years to get to where you're actually building and selling the home. So when people say this is happening so quick, they may not realize that some of the, you know, building activity that they're seeing, that site analysis through entitlement process could have started four or five years ago.
Again, what's the biggest contributor to the to that ten years?
I would say finding land has been tough right now, and getting through the entitlement zoning is a lengthy process. And most folks, and if anyone here is a developer or builder, you know, please jump in and correct me, most, you know, when you're finding a contract, if I'm going to buy some land for you, Mr. Powers, I'm probably not going to go through and close that till I can secure my rezoning, because I don't want to take that on and then it doesn't get rezoned, and now all of a sudden I have land that I can't build on. So I would say the entitlement takes time. The infrastructure and construction, all of the site plan and building permit reviews, that can take one to two years, sometimes more. That's not all county level. Some of that, you know, there's reviews by V dot, there's views by D E Q. There's a lot of agencies that contribute to that, a lot of hands. So I would say probably, you know, if you can find the land, that's jackpot. It's getting from that entitled, like the zoning through all the reviews. Construction, which we'll get to in a later slide, that's where we're starting to see some delays. It exacerbated during COVID because we had a lot of delays on product because people just, they weren't making cabinets, and we saw delays there. We are seeing delays on the construction side due to labor shortage. Some, the materials have largely caught up since since COVID, but that did create a backlog. So it's just a lengthy process, and it's it's hard when you're driving down, whether it's Route sixty or you're driving down Hall Street or wherever, and you see all this popping up, and you're like, it's coming home tonight. It's not, and it takes a very long time. And but I, you know, unless you're kind of in the process, it's it's hard to 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 know that. I didn't know that. But that is one of the things that we as an industry are concerned about, that if we're already operating at a deficit and then it takes this long to get new land ready to where you can build, we're just going to grow back. Did that help?
No. Couldn't some of the deficit be that this current generation doesn't really want to own a home they prefer to rent?
Yes, absolutely. But that deficit contributes to land that we have zoned for multifamily. I mean, this isn't just a process for single family versus multifamily. Absolutely. And it's not just the younger generation. Older generation, you know, our boomers are, you know, I I read a lot about what the consumer wants, and we hear boomers want no maintenance or less maintenance, walkability. So sometimes, you know, my father-in-law is in a rental because he just wants to live here sometimes and then go live in France other times. I'm sorry?
I said I'm a boomer, but I got to have a private, I got a hobo room, it's land, a freezer bed down there.
But you're a young, you're a young boomer.
Chickens to raise.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mentioned my my my, some of my family's still here and some is not. My parents decided when they were in pineseroses, they didn't want to mow all that grass, and they wanted to live maintenance free. So they moved somewhere that they they didn't have, they don't have room for chickens anymore, unfortunately. So yeah, some of it is consumer choice, but I think also, if you talk to a lot of the younger, whether it's millennial, what is the next one, Gen Z, they will tell you they feel homeownership is out of reach because of the cost, even rents. Rents now are a mortgage, and a big piece of that is the land cost and all the costs that go into to financing, you know, and then construction costs, labor cost, and, you know, I, just to give you a, in first quarter of this year, the average cost of a lot, just raw dirt in Powhatan. Now, keep in mind, some of yours is a ton, some, you know, yours is, you can do two acres. Just kind of averaging all those together, a lot, just the dirt, was around two hundred thousand dollars. That's where you even put the first brick in the ground, you know, two hundred K. And again, not just a Powhatan problem. We're seeing lots in some of your suburban jurisdictions that are, you know, one fifty, one seventy for a townhome. So rental for some feels out of reach, and some is consumer preference that renting is just easier, less maintenance.
So is there a correlation? I I'd be curious because interest rates are a big factor. So I'd be curious, like, when we bought our house back in twenty eighteen, I got two point nine percent.
We're gonna, you're ahead of me.
Can I, can I, before we move forward, in the in the millennial grouping, do you, what kind of square footage demand did you see?
I think that depends. I I read a lot that that younger generation, I'm not millennial, I read a lot that they, you know, square footage is as important as amenities are. They want space for their dogs, you know, they want space to recreate, congregate. So I think in any millennial or younger, probably just to get into a home, they're willing to sacrifice some square footage. It's when you get to be, you know, married, having kids, especially when you see the families move up and you want to see more square footage.
And the presentation that you, I went to, the consultant was talking about, the two ends of the barbell, I guess he was using that analogy, and that that far left side in terms of addressing the group called the threes, the folks that are starter home oriented, the square footage would be, would be, I would, I would suspect, in order to get it to that price, would have to be much smaller.
Oh, yes, probably. I mean, and I don't want to guess on square footage because so many things drive, you know, again, the land costs and the lot size are going to drive what square size, square foot home that you can put on the lot, and that's going to vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction or one side of the county or city to the other. So it's hard to, I think it's hard to say they want fifteen hundred, and it's hard to say that fifteen hundred is going to be an attainable price for a first time home buyer, because it depends on so many different factors. But you do, in the the barbell that Mr. Powers is talking of, is the barbell is the two largest generation sizes we have right now is sixty five and over, and then the millennials and younger. And they're surprisingly have the same idea of what kind of house they want. It's interesting. It's the middle that's usually still in kind of that.
Which is where we've lived for the last.
It's attached, it's it's me, to your point about interest rates. I'm sitting in a gorgeous interest rate in a home way too big for me and my husband, and we're going to tough it out because we'd be crazy to sell. So we're kind of holding up inventory, too.
And we downsized at the right time. It was twenty eighteen, we had twenty four hundred square feet, just the two of us, I'm like, no, and five acres now. So we moved out here, and we actually got very lucky because the house had been foreclosed on, and they fixed it up, flipped it, fixed it up. It's, yeah, a loose word I use, were the wires, so they just put a coat of paint on it. But, yeah, I mean, I get it, you know, when I grew up, my first starter home was eleven hundred square feet and I paid seventy five thousand dollars.
And you were happiest, happiest could be.
And now when I Zillow it, the same house is almost six hundred thousand dollars.
My first home was a nineteen twenty six Sears kit home, not even fifteen.
When nineteen twenty six?
It was a little Sears kit home that you put up in the north side, and it was barely fifteen hundred square feet.
Very nice.
And I bought it for two forty, and now Zillow says it's almost six hundred.
Right.
Yeah, it's insane.
Mr. Sheriff, does rezoning include all A one lots that are not rezoned?
No, this this does not include anything by right.
Okay.
Yeah. And that could change your numbers, obviously. And and we do see, you know, this is rezoning you as your board or previous boards actually voted to rezonate property. That's what these numbers are.
Thank you.
All right, so you jumped, jumped ahead of me a little bit, but, you know, we got into talking about what is impacting this, the supply, demand, and the the cost of homes right now. And supply side, labor cost, shortage of labor, material cost, interest rates. It's just as expensive for the developer to borrow and and sit on, you know, interest as it is for the buyer when they're buying the home. You know, you can talk about your people that's sitting in homes with really good interest rates, that trapped equity. It's, I'm in a home that I should sell and give, you know, hopefully bring in the the next future homeowner to move up, but I'm not going to leave my really good interest rate, so I'm kind of holding up that inventory. And we're we're often seeing that a lot with the first time home buyer attainable house price, where these folks are in it and the interest is too good, and they can't sell because they can't afford the next and the bump cost. So they're staying in that first time home buyer inventory and kind of keeping the next gener, you know, the next group of buyers buying up. So.
This is our tow tag house, so they'll get it when we take, get taken out on tow tags.
Well, there was a study done in two thousand seventeen, it's a little dated.
Jennifer called it, I didn't make.
That's that's kind of funny, I'm going to keep that one.
That's a good one, yeah.
Yeah, there was a study done in two thousand seventeen by the Partnership for Housing Affordability that looked at the number of our seniors that owned their home green here, no mortgage. So they they went through, based on tax records, looked at those sixty five and over that owned homes, and they did it for the, for four jurisdictions, Powhatan, Hanover, Chesterfield, and Reiko. They found that seventy percent of those seniors owned their homes with no mortgage, but they were valued at two fifty, two seventy or less. They couldn't move up, they couldn't, even if, even with the equity, just with the market forces, there wasn't the equity there to sell and move into a new construction, fifty five and over community certainly wasn't what could be, they had to go into assisted living. So they were sitting in a lot of that first time home buyer inventory. And it's largely in older areas, so you have to wonder, is it going to be, how it is being maintained? You know, will this be attractive for the next generation to come in and buy, or is it going to be something that requires too much work? So, yeah, and then, you know, the other, so kind of the supply and demand, these these costs, that's something that's out of your control as a local supervisor or or any elected official, but things that can be controlled that impact cost are profit, architectural design requirements. You know, people say, oh, I want all brick, but then I want the house to be affordable. Well, there's a given tape there, you know? We all want good quality homes that are going to, you know, sustain the test, be durable, but that comes with a cost. And then infrastructure, as you well know, new homes brings added folks to roads, you know, to to full capacity, and that's something that, you know, the local government has to consider through its its C I P process, and the developer has to consider as well. Oftentimes, developers are putting in new roads or new turn lanes, and that comes with an added cost. Density restrictions do bring it, you know, do drive cost, as we discussed earlier, you know, larger lots are where you can't have as much dense development, and their density is also treated like a four letter word. But that that is going to put upward pressure on cost. And then environmental restrictions. I'm not an engineer or an expert in environmental regs, but there's a lot of restrictions on the environmental side that you don't control, that get passed down at the local level, that can put a significant impact on cost. All right, so this comes from your your report, which, again, I said was so timely because I wanted to give you a snapshot of what was happening in the market, but I also wanted to leave you with some solutions and things that other localities have been doing to help bring down the cost of home. You'll see here that regulations, now, regulations means federal, state, local, combined. It's not all the things that are approved at the board level, but in all three levels of government, regulations, fees, taxes, permits, et cetera, that's twenty five percent of the cost of a new single family home. So take that land and then add twenty five percent of fees, you know, whether it's permits or reviews, there, you've got another twenty five percent. So some localities have started to, and Reiko has done this, and again, I realize Reiko's not Powhatan, very different jurisdiction, but it's a jurisdiction in the Richmond region that has started to cover the water and sewer connections if you're building a certain product type at a certain price point. Wav building permits and application fees. Expedited plan and zoning reviews. Time is money. If any of you read our president's op ed in the Richmond Biz Seds a couple of months ago, a one month delay in the approval process can add fifteen thousand or more in fees. So think about interest carry. You're sitting there and your, you know, interest is ticking, ticking, ticking on on raw land that you need to start building on, you know, a one month delay, you've just added in fifteen thousand more potentially in in interest and fees, and that doubt, it just trickles down with the buyer. So also, in your report, it talked about providing a variety of housing types. Has anyone seen this house, this this model, because it's Clay Street Builders, one of your local builders? Looks like a single family home, right? It's a duplex. Wouldn't know it. That's a duplex. Two families could live in that. Looks just like a single family home, because I know that is something that is really important to folks is having homes that fit with the existing community character. So density, that really ugly word, doesn't have to be scary. You can find creative ways to support a variety of housing types for small scale development, similar to what you have here in the village, where you have clustered homes. That's actually very environmentally friendly, the more you can kind of cluster homes. I I love Hanover's model where they have that thirty percent of the county that's suburban service area, and that's where they direct new growth, and then the remaining seventies supposed to remain agricultural, rural, much like you have with your your growth, your targeted designated growth areas in your comprehensive plan. They're very specific, outside of the suburban service area, you know, we want rural, and that helps you preserve that farmland while reducing, you know, running infrastructure to areas that aren't suitable for development. And then reduce minimum lot sizes. You know, we talked about this earlier. A two acre minimums, not at a two hundred thousand dollar on average lot, is still not going to help you get a very attainable home at new construction. So looking at alternative, you know, reduced lot sizes, where it's appropriate. It's not going to be appropriate in the far western end of the county, but maybe, you know, around, I don't know, someone might get mad if I use this as an example, but somewhere where you have infrastructure and maybe commercial in the front, you can put something in the back that's a little buffered, but you have, you know, where your infrastructure is. So, you know, I I thought I'd come in here with something grand and like, oh, this has never been tried, but your your housing group really, really nailed it. I don't know who was on this. Was it you, Mr. Martin, if you did?
Yes, you did.
I want to, I want to.
Mr. Tim really?
Oh, very much so.
So, yeah. Um, so yeah, that that's kind of it in a nutshell of what's happening with the new construction market. Again, I know I went through this kind of fast. Um, I will tell you that there is a a group in northern Virginia called Zonda. It's a it's a data group, it's not a builder developer. And they spoke at our uh, state conference a couple of months ago and noted that if the current supply of lots in the Richmond region, um, if we don't get more, if we current pull the ball out at the rate that we're doing and we put nothing else in the pipeline. Now, the single rezoning is approved here in Chesterfield or the city, we will run out of buildable lots in two years. Um, that's multifamily, that's single family. So I know, again, when citizens look at you and say, we're growing too fast, there's too much traffic, and we are growing. We're growing as a region. We're a good place to live, we have good schools, we have a good quality of life, um, we have good jobs and people want to come here. But with those houses, you know, are we going to add housing to keep up with that? Um, and what's going to happen long-term if we don't? Will the, I was the generation that did not come back here after college because my only choice was to live with my parents. And I love them, in case they're listening. Um, but I don't think it's living at home any more than I wanted to, you know, coming out of college. Um, so we have to think about the health of our region for our next generation. So that's the message that I want to leave is, um, as you're thinking about the future of Powhatan, think about those that want to come back here and all, you know, that want to continue living here or those that may, you know, take a job wherever and say, Powhatan's the kind of quality life that I want. And with that, may come a little bit of growing pains, but we need to be mindful of what's happening in the region.
What's your list here? Why wasn't Cumberland County included?
I didn't think Cumberland was in Plan RV's footprint. Yeah, we 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 wanted to mirror the Plan RV's footprint, but then we have, as I said earlier, so many of our members doing uh, work in King William that we added King William. We just, um, as an association brought in a a data analysis position and we're still growing that. So as, and we probably need about ten of them. So I would say Cumberland, Amelia, Lisa, eventually we're going to get them into our data. Um, but we had to build what we have from scratch with a brand-new position, so.
Awesome.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Hagie, I know that, um, we didn't really get into the lot deficit when I came to introduce myself because it was more just, hi, I'm Elizabeth here. Um, is this to kind of any other questions or anything that I can leave?
I think it's good material. I think uh, one of the things that you touched on is something that we started doing about the cost savings involved in clustering.
Mm-hmm.
Is uh, there's there's visible and invisible cost savings. And uh, we, that, we're going to have to do some more grappling around that. The Citizens Working Group just completed some of their work. They made, they made a great observation around the lots that we have, they're buildable lots in residential areas, but with some of those smaller lots come um, utility challenges, you know, and and that's something that as a county we haven't grappled with. Um, because when you're relying on a quarter acre or a half acre to have a well and a septic system and it's like beside another quarter acre, a three-quarter acre with a well and a septic system, you've got rules about proximity and you have uh, things to consider like soil quality. And um, so so while we have a large number of opportunities, there's several layers that we'll have to go back to really look at.
Right.
Which of these are.
Yeah, it's not easy. It's not easy. Um, and and I know not having the, you know, water and sewer connections and that that makes it more challenging. Um, and I look at clustering in a more positive light, um, because as I said earlier, you're clustering, you're preserving more that rural character space, you know, versus chopping up ten acres at a time and then putting cars on the road that's not meant to have the cars on the road. Um, and you cluster maybe for you not to have the road infrastructure, but obviously you need the water and sewer um, capacity and inability as well. But I look at it this way, of long-term preserving that rural character of Powhatan, which I hear from my own family, um, and from throughout the region that that's what people want.
Maybe just an observation you could comment uh, on too is, one of the takeaways from our conversation a couple of months ago and and something that you touched on here is that uh, housing is really a regional issue. Uh, you know, and and we often think about it in terms of uh, in the context of Powhatan County, but a lot of the pressures that we're feeling are regional pressures and they're both good and bad, you know?
Right.
It's it's good that the Richmond region is seeing, is being seen as an attractive region uh, for economic development, but that brings with it pressure.
It does, it does. You're feeling the pressure of, you know, new job announcements and just Richmond becoming a really hip, cool place to live and someone might have been attracted here to go live in Scottsdale and now they're having a family and they're like, can't, I don't want to live in Scottsdale anymore. No offense to Scottsdale. Um, and they live in Powhatan. So, you know, whether it's people coming here for jobs or just that natural progression of of, you know, life, um, we have a, we need good quality of life in our region. And I get a little frustrated because we always talk about not having attainable housing and and that depends on where you are in life. As a first-time homebuyer, I was very limited in what I could buy, but the market was a little better than what it is today. Um, we have to remember that not everyone can afford the large lot, single family and if we're going to be attractive to that generation, we've got to have some options for them. Yeah.
And then my last thought that I'd be interested, uh, more of a statement to react to is, we've been talking recently too about the demographics of the county. Um, and we we just hear them and this is how the county is changing, but I I think that we're starting to wrap our minds around, you can influence that, you know, and and I think that housing, as we're talking about that, is is a way, it's driving some of your demographic shifts, even if you're interacting with it in a passive way.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you were to have an area hypothetical that was some mixed-use, you know, had some recreation and open space with some maybe starter homes and then areas where folks could walk to go grab a beer or go get a coffee or take their kid to the playground, like, that's going to drive a demographic that might not have looked at the county before because it was just large lot detached, car-dependent. They're still getting that taste of rural living, but still, you know, a little bit of of activity. Or even, you know, again, I mentioned my parents, like, they said, I don't want to live somewhere where I have to call this grass. Where, so, you know, having somewhere that's less maintenance, you might see some retired reeds or some of your retirees that are in their homes sell and move into living that's more in their lifestyle choices and then free up that next bump up for buyers.
Well, and to your point, not just a split, an age split in terms of of the county complexion, but in the case of Roanoke, that we learned in the strategic plan review, they they actually were losing population and they've put forth plans and and policies that would start to bring people back into the county, mostly around, a lot around ag tur- tourism and rebranding the the area and basically recapture a lot of that population. Well, this is not going negative.
Well, this was really nice. It's nice to come back home and get to, you know, share a little bit of our information. And anytime you can be a resource, whether it's data, you know, if you want to look at some different floor plans or, you know, anything that you're questioning in the land development or building, we want to be that resource for you. And if I can't answer the question, which most of the time I can't because I'm not a developer and I'm not an engineer or an electrician, I can find someone that can.
Well, since you mentioned that, I'm sure staff may end up reaching out to you when we uh, look to finalize our future land use map and come next year, so.
Everybody in the region's doing that at once. I wish you guys could like space it out a little bit.
Wouldn't mind doing the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Powers, if you could handle the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you for this day and for.
Thank you for those who sent here. We ask that you will give us a sermon of wisdom as we deliberate on the issue before us today. We ask to bless our nation, guide our leaders. We ask to be thankful for it.
Amen.
Amen.
Do you have any formal request to postpone agenda items or make any additions, deletions, or changes in order of presentation?
Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion in the public hearing that we move uh, the ordinance, item B, to become item A and then the Powhatan County School Board, um, issue with the Powhatan Land, uh, Pocahontas Landmark Center be moved as item B.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none? We'll make that change. Uh, since we've gotten that as a formal approval, any board updates? All right, hearing none. County administrator updates?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. We've got a couple of slides coming up on the screen, but a a couple of events in the community to make you aware of. Uh, first is a reminder that this Thursday is the final farmer's market of the summer season. Uh, the market starts at four P M. on Thursday and here is here in the village, so we we hope to see you there. Um, this Saturday is also the Free Clinic's inaugural Good Medicine Five K and Fun Run. Um, the run starts at the Free Clinic Building and you can register now. Registration is open uh, online. And then last, yeah, we're just two weeks away from the Festival of the Grape, which is on Saturday, October fourth. Um, and you can still get your advance tickets available for the festival online. Um, so make sure you get your ticket soon. Thank you.
Awesome. That'll bring us to our proclamations.
Yeah, our first proclamation, uh, Ms. Katie Shiflett, our deputy clerk, is here to read a proclamation commemorating the one hundred and sixtieth anniversary of Gilfield Baptist Church.
Yeah, I I don't believe anyone from Gilfield was able to make it tonight. Um, they are busy setting up for their uh, their celebration this weekend. Um, however, we were able to send a copy of the proclamation to be uh, printed in their their commemorative journal for for this weekend. Commemorating the one hundred and sixtieth anniversary of Gilfield Baptist Church, whereas Gilfield Baptist Church has served as a pillar of faith, hope, and community in Powhatan County for a hundred and sixty years, providing spiritual leadership, outreach, and fellowship to generations of families. And whereas the church was founded in eighteen sixty-five in the humble surroundings of a dirt-floor tobacco barn, established not only a place of worship but sanctuary of perseverance, dignity, and purpose. And whereas, out of necessity, as most of the early members had limited access to formal education, the church's earliest history was preserved through enduring oral tradition passed from generation to generation and with reverence, care, and pride. And whereas, from those modest beginnings, Gilfield Baptist Church grew into a beacon of faith-led resilience, compassion, and community, enriching the lives of countless individuals. And whereas, the church has not only been a place of spiritual formation, but also a vital hub for cultural persever- preservation and social progress, fostering unity, justice, and the common good. And whereas, the congregation of the leadership of Gilfield Baptist Church will gather on September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, to commemorate it this historic milestone, honoring the legacy of its founders, celebrating the faithfulness of its members, and looking forward with hope to its continued service. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and congratulates Gilfield Baptist Church on the occasion of its one hundred and sixtieth anniversary and extends its heartfelt appreciation for the church's enduring contributions to the spiritual, cultural, and civic life of Powhatan County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors encourage all citizens to join in celebrating this remarkable, remarkable legacy and honor the past, present, and future of Gilfield Baptist Church. Um, and we will be mailing this out to them.
Yeah, our next item, uh, Ms. Megan Carroll, uh, our Director of Social Services, is here to read a proclamation recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the board for letting me read this proclamation for October. I appreciate your time and attention. Um, before I get started with the proclamation, I just wanted to share some exciting things that are going on over at DSS with regards to domestic violence. For the first time in eight years, we have an active program coming out of our building that um, citizens can use as a viable resource, a place where they can go when they have questions, when they need connection, when they need to figure out what what to do next. Um, and we did receive a grant in March, thanks to Mr. Hagie and to Sarah Dutton, who helped me with the grant. We received a significant amount that allowed us the opportunity to employ a person specific for domestic violence services. So that person unfortunately can't be here tonight. Her name is Bailey Higgins. Many of you have met her before. She's been kind of making her way through the county. Um, but she is your go-to when you have questions regarding domestic violence and she is open for referrals and for community engagement. Our inaugural kind of public situation or public presence for her was at the National Night Out. We do have fundraisers planned and more events coming, so we will let you guys know as they occur. Um, but yeah, she's she's doing a great job and we're very excited about this because it's been a long time since we've had a formal program coming out of the department. Um, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and read our proclamation. Um, the County Powhatan Proclamation Recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October twenty twenty-five. Whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, but particularly women and children, and whereas one in three women and one in four men have been victims of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime, and whereas the impact of domestic violence on individuals, families, and communities is recognized nationally during the month of October, and whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and they should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation. And whereas during this month, we honor the courage and strength of victims and survivors and pledge to provide continued support, advocacy, and education for those affected by domestic violence and to empower them and their families to create a life that is safe, healthy, and free of violence. And whereas survivors should have access to the compassion, comfort, and healing they need. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and supports the efforts and mission of the Powhatan Department of Social Services' Domestic Violence Program in playing an active role to prevent domestic violence and encourages all Powhatan County residents to promote community support and awareness of this important issue as we work to create a safe environment for all. And I did forget one piece uh, that I meant to say beforehand. We have purchased um, numerous Starburst lights that we are going to be putting out in the month of October after the Festival of the Grape. You will see them all down Old Buckingham Road. We have partnered with um, not only county government, but our our other agencies that we work with, as well as merchants throughout the village, um, and some private residents as well. So if you see a purple Starburst um, solar light on the ground, that is for domestic violence, not for Halloween. Um, and we did buy some lawn signs so that people understand that that's what the purpose is, is to bring awareness to the cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Uh, next, Mr. Art Tate with Powhatan Fire and Rescue is here to read a proclamation recognizing fire prevention week. And I think we can invite all the fire and rescue personnel in the back of the room to to come forward. After Mr. Tate reads the proclamation, uh, we'd like to snap a picture of of you and the board. Before you go down to.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Art Tate. I'm a firefighter with Powhatan Fire and Rescue. Tonight we have, I have the honor to speak on behalf of Fire Chief Johnson and Deputy Chief Goodman as we recognize Fire Prevention Week, which takes place this year from October fifth through October eleventh. For more than a hundred years, the National Fire Protection Agency has set aside a week, a week as a time to remind all of us the importance of fire safety in our homes and schools and our community. Each year carries a theme that addresses the challenges we face today. Each year, um, this year's theme is is focused on lithium-ion batteries, something many of us use every day in devices like cell phones, laptops, power tools, e-bike, e-bikes, and scooters. While these batteries are, while these batteries make our lives easier, they also come at a serious risk if not handled, charged, or stored properly. Fires caused by lithium-ion batteries are fast, dangerous, and preventable when we take the right result, right precautions. Throughout Fire Prevention Week, Fire, Powhatan Fire and Rescue will be sharing safety tips through our social media platform to help keep you and your family safe. We encourage everyone to get involved, ask questions, and take this message home. Simple steps like using the right charger, keeping batteries away from heat, and replacing damaged batteries and proper disposal can save lives. On the behalf of Chief Johnson, Deputy Chief Goodman, the entire Powhatan Fire and Rescue, I want to thank you for your attention tonight in making fire safety a priority. I want to thank you for your attention tonight in making fire safety a priority in your homes and workplace. Together, we can make Powhatan a safer place. Okay, do victim violence. Okay, whereas Powhatan is committed to ensuring fire, uh, safety and security to all citizens and visitors. As we got to regular now. Fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and presents the lithium ion batteries in many households' devices, including unique fire risk. And whereas, most of the electronics we use today on the homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, and, uh, power tools and e-bikes, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which is, if mishandled and damaged, uh, properly and improperly charged and can overheat and start fires and explosions. Whereas, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, NFPA, reports an increase of batteries-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe and use of lithium ion batteries. Whereas, residents should follow three key calls to, to action. By only listing products charged batteries safely and recycle them responsibly. Whereas, lithium ion batteries stored in large amounts of energy in small spaces. Improper use, overcharging, and using off-brand chargers without safety certifications or exploding batteries damage and can cause fire and explosion. Whereas, proper disposal or recycle lithium ion batteries help prevent the environment hazard, reduce fire risk in homes and the community. Whereas, the community, uh, first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through fire prevention, safety, and education. Community outreach and whereas, 2025 Fire Prevention Week's theme, change, uh, charge into safety lithium ion batteries in your homes, uh, serves the reminder of all of us, the importance of using, charging, recycling, and lithium ion batteries, safely reduce fire, fire risk in, in homes and communities. Therefore, Powhatan County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025 Fire Prevention Week.
Mr. Tate, can I get everybody just to follow you, uh, up to the middle of the stage and we'll come around to you and, and take a picture?
All right, that's going to move us to our public comment period. And I want to just remind, uh, everybody, before we dive into this public comment period, we do have two public hearings. Uh, one that's going to be on the, uh, public, I'm sorry, Powhatan County School Board, uh, for the request to demolish the, uh, Pokahontas Landmark Center or portion thereof, uh, as well as an additional public hearing for the countywide zoning ordinance. It's going to affect rural event venue standards. So if you're interested in speaking publicly on behalf of those two items and you happen to sign up for the public comment, uh, just let me know as I call your name and, uh, you can, uh, wait to speak on those two issues. Carl Schwendeman.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm at 1727 Teresa Lane. I would like to make a public comment that, um, that when Smart Scale opened, the Smart Scale Highway Funding Program, when it opens up in March, could they make one of the four, proposed four projects, a pedestrian project? Because, because Powhatan has some really big tickets, some really big-ticket projects that could really benefit its pedestrians, such as, uh, extending man road, the man road sidewalk, or the Shags Road sidewalk, or the, or the, or the sidewalks breaking out of the village and going east towards the food, towards Food Lion on the Trailmaster Plan. Also, even the, uh, that, because I know there's also like a fictional fifth. There's like a fifth application. It's more like a learning, it's more like a, a pre-application. Even that would be a wealth of information from VDOT on the proposed projects.
Thank you. Danielle Lipscomb. Uh, not yet. No, we'll, we'll do that in a little while. Thank you. Roy Palmore.
Good evening. My name's Roy Palmore. I live at 5948 Durbin Road. This is my third time speaking. I'm not a good speaker, but I'll do the best I can again. I'm here to interrate again on saving Pokahontas High School. I just give a little bit of myself. Back in the days, I did a lot of street racing. I was called a legend.
Mr. Palmore, is this, is this for the Pokahontas School?
Yeah, I'm leading with that, yeah. I'm getting ready to say Pokahontas High School is a legend and a landmark. I'm just telling you why I'm here to talk about it, you know? And, uh...
Okay, if you're going to talk about that, we have a public hearing just for that, so you can speak later on.
I'll be quick as I can then.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about it again, so once again, I enjoyed going to Pokahontas High School when the, when the class integrated. When the class integrated into sixes, I chose to stay at Pokahontas and graduate there. That's my alma mater. I enjoyed walking the streets of, uh, the halls of Pokahontas here, the bell ring. So all I'm going to cut it short, I'm here to ask you once again to please vote, vote to save Pokahontas High School, because this is a landmark in Powhatan for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, we'll make sure that, uh, we do have a public, public hearing for that topic. So, uh, anybody else wishing to speak on that, we can, uh, we'll let you know when that time has come. Uh, Mr. Andrew Sneed. Okay, thank you. All right, that'll close our public comment period. And that'll bring us to the consent agenda.
Yep, items A through F on the consent agenda are minutes approvals from prior board meetings. And item G is a resolution authorizing acceptance of opioid settlement funds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That'll bring us to our new business.
Um, item A is Resolution R 2025-65, and Davenport is with us this evening to walk through our financing options and their recommendation for our fiscal year 26. See if pre-projects that will be debt-funded.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kyle Lox with Davenport, always nice to see you. Uh, we've got a hard copy of what you have on the screen, so I don't know if I can ponder over here. Just if anybody wants to take any notes. Again, Kyle Lox, um, and my colleague Austin Sachs here as well. Uh, we certainly always appreciate being with, with you and the board. Um, you may recall in July, um, at a work session, we talked through at some length, the financing process for capital projects for both the county and the schools. Um, a couple of months have flown by, but we've worked our way through that financing process, um, successfully, and have the results of that and some recommendations and an action that you as a board can take, um, with a resolution prepared by bond council. So we've got a presentation up on the screen that, uh, will walk you through. Always happy to answer questions as we go. But in essence, again, what we'd started in July, which is very typical for the county and, and many of your peers, is to look at a couple of different ways to go financial capital projects. Importantly, those are all part of your budget, all part of your CIP, and so in accordance with the good planning that you have done for a number of years as a county. Um, so we've gone through that, we call dual-track process. We've gotten competitive bids from banking institutions. Let's call that track one, and we've applied to the Virginia Resources Authority longstanding state program. That is track two. We've done those various things. We'll give you the results today in our recommendation. Um, just big picture in terms of interest rates, you've probably seen a fair amount of this in the news, but they remain very favorable. Um, we'll talk a little bit about, there was a Fed action last week, if you saw that in the news, meaning the Federal Reserve, um, began to drop their short-term interest rates. What's important to keep in mind here is that when the county goes and borrows these types of capital projects, we're borrowing on a long-term basis. So the final maturity of this financing will be 20 years. There's different components to it. There's a seven-year piece, a 15-year piece, and a 20-year piece, but all those can be thought of as being long-term financing. And so as we look at this chart, long-term financing rate's still very, very favorable. And so it's a good time to be locking in funding for these capital projects that you as a county have identified. Um, on the next page is the other side of that whereby if we're going to borrow these dollars, roughly 6.8 million per the CIP here, um, we'll have the ability to turn around and reinvest those dollars, since we talked about that a little bit in July. Um, and you do indeed have that ability to reinvest the dollars and benefit as a county from the earnings on those money, just as you would any other dollars in the general fund. And so what we've shown you up on the screen here is called, is called the Virginia SNAP Program. It is a investment program run by the State Treasurer specifically for local governments to go reinvest tax-exempt bond proceeds, which this loan will be. There's certain rules and requirements, um, for borrowing on a tax-exempt basis, which you as a county are able to do. And this program, it's run by the state, um, basically meets those requirements and allows you to benefit from the interest earnings thereon. Um, right now, that interest rate's probably about a 4.25. It varies a little bit and fluctuates with the market, but plus or minus, it's probably about 4.25% in terms of the county's ability to go borrow these dollars, reinvest them, and benefit from those interest earnings. And so with all that in mind, here are the results of that competitive bank bidding process, which again is a process that you as a county have used successfully a number of times over a long time period. We ended up getting four different banks. You see at the top of the screen there, Bank of America, Capital One, Huntington, and Webster. Um, all of these are well-known in the marketplace, obviously Bank of America and Capital One, very, very large institutions. Um, and so you should take that as a seal of approval that four very real, um, very active lenders, uh, were interested in providing the county, uh, a loan. Um, the middle of the page here, our assumption, which hopefully is, is right, you can tell us if we're right or wrong, is that the borrowing amount here is about 6.85 million dollars. And that, if you go back to those July meetings, we had a larger amount and a smaller amount. Um, what we've assumed in this presentation is borrowing that quote-unquote "smaller" amount whereby the six-plus million dollars for the high school roof is not included in this package here for the moment. Um, certainly, Mr. Chair, members of the board, others can correct us if we're wrong in that assumption, but that's what we've assumed for purposes of this presentation. Um, the bottom of the page, we'll cut straight to the chase, and there's more details in here. Um, but the best bid of those four bidders is Bank of America. Um, and why are they the best bid? So the first thing we'll point out is the interest rate. Bank of America provided the lowest interest rate of any of those four lenders that provided a bid. And so when you're evaluating a financing like this, arguably, the first thing you're going to go look at, no different than your mortgage or your car loans, say, okay, who gives me the best interest rate, the best deal in that sense? Um, that was Bank of America at a 3.93. That 3.93 is fixed for the entirety of the 20-year term. That's important. So we're going to borrow for a 20-year time period. Um, the underlying projects will be financed over some portion of that 20 years. We know, pending your approval and, and getting to closure, that rate will be 3.93 for that whole 20-year time period. The other major element we care about here in the middle of the page here is the prepayment provisions. And so if we're going to borrow for a 20-year time period, again, knowing that these projects have a long useful life, we want the ability to refinance, we want the ability to maybe pay things off a little quicker. Um, and the Bank of America proposal provides that ability. Um, the details of it, middle of the page there, uh, basically, for the first 10 years of the loan, we can prepay with a 2% penalty. The following five years, there's a 1% penalty, and the final five years, there's no penalty whatsoever. Most loans of this are probably going to be refinanced somewhere around maybe the 10-year time period. Hard to know exactly. It depends on where rates are. Um, but we like the flexibility of being able to pay it off a little quicker if we want to. Realistically, maybe refinance it at some point in the future. You've got some of that flexibility built in here. The last element, um, of the Bank of America bid that's a little unique and it's good, um, is the collateral that this particular entity within Bank of America wanted is the actual equipment that is being financed. And so, um, we talked with commonplace in these financings to pledge like an actual building, a facility. Um, Bank of America in this sense said, you know, we don't need the whole building. We just need the individual pieces of equipment, um, which is school buses, fire trucks, and some HVAC and roofing improvements. Uh, we actually pledged that and not have to pledge a whole, uh, county facility and sort of save that collateral for future reuse. So that's not necessarily a numerical benefit. It's probably a little structuring flexibility for you as a county going forward that we thought was a positive.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Questions now? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, the Bank of America is going to cost us over the, the term $106,000 more. I assume that the, the reason that you're recommending them is the flexibility factor?
Two reasons. I, I think, Mr. Powers, you're going to page five here in terms of, um, so Bank of America, the bank bids, that's the best bank bid, that's the one we like the most, that's the recommendation. That was sort of track one. The second track that we could consider is the Virginia Resources Authority, that VRA pool program. And so that's exactly the comparison you're looking at on the page right here. Um, the nuance, and it's a very important nuance with the Bank of, the, uh, VRA program, is that we don't know what the rates on their loan will be until such time as they price. And so this is our best estimate of where rates are right now, but we still have probably a month, even longer, before they're actually in the market. And so there's no way to know specifically where rates are going to go in the future. That's a, you know, sort of crystal ball question. And so as we looked at the comparison between these two, uh, we like the flexibility, definitely, in terms of Bank of America. We also like the bird-in-hand approach whereby what Bank of America allows you to do is take interest rate risk, take market risk off the table, lock in, um, all the capital planning that, that you as a county, we help you with, has been done at a 5% interest rate. And so we're locking in at something below 4%, takes that market risk off the table. And so it's flexibility and certainty as to interest rate, the two reasons we like it. Yeah, and maybe just to, to wrap up that page, so, so basically the point is that 106,000 or thereabouts, it's an estimate. We don't really know what that's going to be. Could be higher, could be lower. And again, we like that level of certainty. Um, so page six, the rationale, um, again, in terms of Bank of America, it's a fixed 20-year loan. We know that. Um, pending, obviously, uh, your approval and any other questions, and moving to a successful closing process, which is still sort of a process we need to work through with Bank of America. We don't have any reason to believe that'll be a problem here, um, for the moment. Again, they allow us to, uh, use just the, the equipment as collateral versus a whole building. Um, and they do have flexible prepayment provisions, they being Bank of America, in terms of future flexibility over the life of the loan. So in terms of time schedule, um, uh, the only action of the board that we would need, meaning Board of Supervisors, is this evening. There's a resolution that was prepared by Maguire Woods, who is your bond counsel, has been for a long time, that would basically be the only action of the Board of Supervisors and allow this process to move forward. Um, we will need one meeting of the school board in the middle part of October, just because of legal technicalities of some of the leases. And then we'd be ready to close, uh, basically by the end of October. Funds in hand, get reinvested, um, in that SNAP program, and begin earning interest on your behalf. Um, and so with that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll pause, see if there's any questions, um, thoughts, anything you'd like me to elaborate on further.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
What, uh, how, what's the, the second, the Capital One was the second one? Came in second on the interest rate?
Yeah.
Do you remember what the interest rate was?
Yeah, the balance of the bidders, we're all in the low 4% range. And so I'm going to test my eyes here a little bit. Um, Cap- I'm gonna test my eyes here a little bit. Um, Capital One was a 454 and a 438, a couple of different options there. So again, compared to a 393 Huntington Bank was a 428 and Webster Bank was a 427. So Bank of America was lower to the tune of 30 plus basis points.
Thank you.
This doesn't affect our bond rating by any, by any way, shape or form?
Nope. Great question. So by virtue of your budget planning process and all the planning that you go through with that. This all fits within your financial policies. It's fits within your um, your budget, obviously in terms of just cash flowing it. And so the short answer to that is no, it does not for those those various reasons.
Do you have the ability to? Maybe chat about borrowing power in the future? What kind of position this puts us in?
Yes. So so this financing itself, so you you borrow, just rounded up easy numbers, about $7 million thereabouts. Um, there's a couple of aspects of your borrowing power, use that term to think about. Um, and you may recall back in July, we're talking a bit about this. You've got debt capacity and you've debt affordability. And so debt capacity is the concept that, okay, we can go borrow some more dollars and keep ourselves within our financial policies. And keep ourselves within generally good stead with the rating agencies. That tends to be a bigger number. Then the other half of the equation, which is debt affordability. Debt affordability is if I'm going to go borrow some money, where is the dollars going to come from to make the payments? Um, and so you as a board with this year's budget proactively put some more dollars in uh, to make sure that you could cover debt service. Um, on any variety of these capital projects, of which these are a portion of it. Uh, this financing itself does not exhaust those dollars on the affordability side. And so. You probably have in the rain, you know, realm of probably 11 million dollars of additional capacity. Just with the revenues that you allocated this year in the budget, and that's before we get to. Uh, thinking about any future revenue growth. It's before we get to thinking about future decline. Um, that's also before we think about sort of getting to the capacity side of the equation. So. I think we'll, with your blessing, um, we'll be coming back with some more detailed information on that. But I think big picture of this financing itself does not exhaust in any way your capacity to take on new projects. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Do you anticipate any refinancing in the near future?
Hard to know. Um, we watch it. And so we've got all your debt modeled up as rates evolve and move. Um, we monitor that pretty much, you know, on a, on a very, call it constant basis. Will rates go down in the future and allow us to refinance? I don't know. Um, be great if they could. Um, but we certainly watch it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll uh, open it up to the board for comments, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I do have one question. Charlotte, what is our debt service payment going to be on this?
Interest was around. Interest would be around 100,000 for 2026 and then it'll be 731,000, 732,000. I mean, it varies, but it's around. For the, for the earlier years, it's more because we're doing the fire apparatus. And the buses on a shorter period because you don't want to finance them longer than their life. And then it drops in 2034, it drops down to about 486,000 a year for the rest of the term or. Goes even lower. It's very structured.
And all well within our budget without having to mess with the tax rate or anything like that.
Correct, because that was what you guys had done um, during the budget process by setting aside. Uh, some of the tax rate specifically to pay for the debt service.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I I I do, if I could, please.
Go ahead.
Um, I ask, I I ask Will to, and I haven't heard back from from him yet, and pose this to Charlotte also. The bus replenishment schedule is as a set standard after so many miles and so many years in operation. I'm just, I would like to see if we couldn't do an analysis if we were to extend that by two years or three years. To understand the pros and cons of that. I know it would save us money. But I like, I like to understand that the 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 metrics in terms of, is there a safety problem in keeping them on the road two more years? Or is there a additional cost for maintenance that needs to be considered?
I'm I can get with the uh, the school board or uh, the school staff and ask them about their um, replacement schedule. I mean, I know that there's a VDOE um, kind of best practices anywhere between 13 and 15 years, but we can definitely speak on um, what their. Pros and cons of pushing it a little farther. Um, I would have to get with um, them and the transportation director.
Appreciate if that's okay with you, Will, to to do that.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I get some clarification on the projects? This will be associated with this?
Sure. Um, so uh, it's for the current, so some of these are from 25 uh, buses that are on order that we had planned to do leases, but. I didn't want to do the lease too soon. Um, but then when we were doing this, we thought it was best financially to roll in. The planned lease for the 25 buses and then 26 buses. Um, and then there is the fire and rescue. Um, I believe it's an engine. Um, the ladder truck and an ambulance and then the Pocahontas Elementary School HVAC project.
Thank you.
Well, I uh, I'm going on a limb here. I I appreciate the uh, school board members that are uh, present, just because these are difficult conversations to have and difficult. Decisions to make and just staying uh, in tune with what's going on, how certain things are paid for, things like that. So uh, thank you for those that are present. Appreciate it. That's good to stay engaged. Now, obviously we know uh, Dr. Tigan's here, uh, well engaged in all these things and. When we kind of try to game plan how we're going to tackle these large items that the feasibility studies and the facility studies and everything that uh. Kind of point us in the direction of what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, things like that. So um, there are tough decisions ahead. Um, so here we are.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If I could, please, to give a shout out and a commendation to Mr. Benway. Um, at at our most recent joint meeting, um, he went to the, to the uh, analysis of the uh, high school roof. And uh, made a determination that there was a way to um, fix any issues, uh, but postpone the overall, the the total repair of the roof. Which has allowed us to move the the six and a half million dollars off of the the calculation for borrowing here. So. I I just, just wanted uh, Doc Tigan to just mention that and give a shout out to Mr. Benway. Because he he brought that forward without any prompting from us and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, comments, questions? Yeah, a motion for a resolution. I'll make a motion to approve resolution R 2025 dash 65. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. That'll bring us to our first public hearing. And since we've made the switch, we're going to go to ordinance uh, O 2025 dash 29, which is the countywide zoning ordinance.
Yep. So our first item is uh, countywide zoning ordinance amendment and Mr. Ligon Webb, our planning director is here to present on this item.
Yes. Hello, board. Uh, this is a amendment that we've been working on for a couple of months at the. Planning Commission, uh, pretty straightforward. It was brought forward to us uh, by a couple of citizens regarding rural event venues. Uh, both of the requests uh, were a little bit different in that uh, they were looking for uh, potentially in a rural event venue, of course. Uh, in 83 dash 43-2, those are the standards that govern rural event venues. And under item B, there are currently five standards, uh, as you can see in in your packet. We're proposing uh, to keep the 10 acre minimum uh, the same. Uh, what we were just uh, requesting, uh, if you can look in your packet, uh, you'll see what we'd add number six uh, to there that would allow for. Items two through five to be modified during the CUP process. Uh, the one, I think, uh, individual that was here, uh, the issue was with outdoor amplified music. According to one of the standards. Uh, you would require to have uh, everything would have to be inside for amplified uh, music. So. Uh, that was, for instance, uh, one of the, one of the requests. Other request was uh, a small scale type venue that would be. Uh, if you look at a standard three, it would be a little bit closer to another residential building. Right now it has to be 300 feet. I think this one we looked at be maybe about 250. Uh, again, uh, the idea is that uh, you know, even with the outdoor music. Uh, wouldn't just be a carte blanche, you know, you can be as loud as you want. It would be very specific uh, standards on times when it would happen. And this is, you know, this particular one request uh, that was talked about the outside amplified music. Uh, was just simply, it could just be a, you know, a microphone uh, that they're out there having an an event or a wedding or something like that. So the idea was to give a little bit of uh, leadway in those regulations. Uh, again, pretty straightforward. Uh, and again, keep that 10 acre standard and it wouldn't change anyone that has a, you know, current CUP for. Event venue that wouldn't change anything and they would have to come in and modify it. Uh, and I don't, you know, feel like there's going to be a run of people trying to do that, but. Uh, that's a quick summary. Any questions for me?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
Uh, I think the current uh, noise noise ordinance uh, is an 11 o'clock curfew. How does that play in in this particular situation?
Well, I I would imagine, I mean, that would be the countywide ordinance that everybody would have to follow. So uh, but if if you made no mention. Uh, to uh, the noise, that would be have they follow, but I I anticipate with this one applicant, I anticipate that it'll be very specific in the CUP. What times they would have outdoor, you know, any kind of amplified sound and what the nature will be and. Uh, I know this particular property is very large, uh, located down by the river, so. I I don't really anticipate that would be an issue, but I anticipate, like I said, during the CUP, if they come forward, this is amended, that we would be very specific of their their music with times, things like that.
So that would be imposed administratively by by staff?
Right, we would.
By case, by case basis?
Right, we we would bring forward conditions, you know, unique to that particular parcel.
Okay. Is there anything in in here that would require some uh, notification to surrounding uh, property owners? And if they were to object, um.
Yeah, part of the CUP.
What bearing would that have on the, on the decision?
I think it'd have a big bearing. So part of the CUP would be, you know, if they came in and wanted to. One, apply for a rural event venue that requires CUP. And also we would make note in the ad that they are asking for a modification of maybe one of the standards, make it very clear so neighbors and everyone knew. What, you know, what was being requested.
Yeah, I I I'm I'm very much in favor, support and want to give a a lot of attention to property rights. And if an individual on their property wants to do one of this sort of thing, but the property right restriction, you you can't impose externalities on your neighbors when that can be noise or or such as that. So I would, I would, I would hope in the cup process that you would be monitoring that very closely.
Yes, sir, we would.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will uh, open it up for the uh, public comment for this uh, public hearing. Anybody wish to come forward, please do so and state your name and address.
Believe me, Chuck Cack, 400 Huguenot Trail. We have a 500 acre property, eastern end of the uh, county. My mother started this back in the late eighties, early nine, oh, excuse me, early nineties. We've lost my mother since then. My father tried to get uh, get it back on the table and he is passed as well. Now it's up to my wife and myself to uh, try and restart this. Again, we had those items that were in front of us. Well, first contact with the county, uh, it said that everything had grandfathered in. Due to my mother's acceptance back then. And with the site visit, they thought maybe we had to do X and then after that it was another X. So. That's where we are in the procedure and I just want to be here to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question, sir? Um, what are you planning to do? On on the property in terms of this event?
My mother had weddings, wedding receptions.
Okay.
Business luncheons, dinner groups, things of that nature.
You're gonna have to make a lot of noise on 500 acres to bother somebody, so.
I agree.
So God bless you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we will close the public comment period for this hearing. And it opens it up to the board. Not hearing any comments? I'll uh, I'll make a motion to approve the uh, ordinance O 2025 dash 29. We'll take a roll call vote for this ordinance, please.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Ms. Morsette.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kitty.
Aye.
Chair Denali.
Aye. That's 5-0. That'll bring us to uh, resolution R 2025 dash 64.
Uh, this is a resolution of the Palton County School Board's request to demolish a portion of the Pocahontas Landmark Center. Uh, and Mr. Ligon Webb, our planning director, will present on this item as well.
Yep, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and share my screen, give a brief presentation. Okay, uh, Pocahontas Landmark Center, demolition permit. You can see the case number there. Uh, this is the hearing. And of course, a picture here, you can see a pretty, pretty good picture of the landmark center. If you see my mouse, this obviously is with a school board operates and this is part where the museum. Uh, and the Parks and Recreation uh, have uh, office and the gymnasium as well. Uh, the demolition permit was submitted July 21st, 2025 by the Palton County School Board. Uh, the proposal is demolish roughly just over 39,000 square feet. At at the location of 4290 Anderson Highway. Uh, this is about a 13 acre site that's highlighted here to the right. Uh, historic context, uh, the, uh, it's identified as a historic resource in the 2021 consecutive plan. Uh, in the Village Special Area Plan, uh, in that portion of the comprehensive plan. It also is recognized by Virginia Historical Marker for its significance in segregated and desegregated education. And of course, as I said, that was approved by DHR. Uh, the ordinance requirement is in the zoning ordinance. It says a demolition of a historic landmark. Uh, requires board supervisor's approval after the plan commission recommendation. And possible, this is also in the ordinance, possible consultation consultation with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, which staff, some people from the plan commission have been some consultation with. People at DHR. I do note that it is called the Landmark Center, uh, and the landmark is in the ordinance. Um, so staff did advance this cause on the historic overlay district provision as just noted. Uh, on September 2nd, 2025, the plan commission voted 3-2 to recommend approval of the demolition permit. Uh, and again, just for here to you to see, here is the historic marker that is in front of the uh, along Anderson Highway. And uh, just to kind of go over the wings here, and I know this is maybe not the biggest picture, but you can see here the original Pocahontas High School here. This is wing A. Uh, and these are, you know, showing a subsequent slide, these, you know, these are to be preserved. Uh, B, wing B here, uh, was the original African American Elementary School. That's roughly 18,000 square feet. Uh, C wing was added in the 50s and 60s and the D wing also in the 50s and 60s with the corresponding square footage. Um, all of this and, you know. All of this, you know, is the landmark center. I did kind of note, called this the landmark center, but that's, you know, the recreation office, the museum, but all of this, of course, we refer to as the Pocahontas Landmark Center. And again, just, this is from the demolition permit, just to show you the 39,275 square feet of mid 20th century buildings at the landmark center. The demolition would target specific wings while leaving active facilities in place, excluding this, as mentioned, the school board administrative offices, the museum, Parks and Recreation. So the gray shaded area are the areas that are proposed to be removed, demolished. I think this was the home building right here, and C, the, you know, so you can see what's being preserved. C, D, and B, and I believe B was, again, as mentioned, was the original elementary school part of this. Just some images showing the building. We did, staff did walk the building, take a look at it, and just, just some images that were in the packet, also in the report, to show any of the different various views of the portions proposed to be demolished. And staff recommendation, yeah, this is a little bit different request than we get on the zoning end of things. As mentioned, the plan commission did, they recommend the demolition, which would be an approval of this request. So approval, it was authorized as a demolition. A denial is to preserve structures, again, due to their cultural and historic value. And the other potential is a deferral. That potentially give more time for the BOs, the board supervisors and the school board, to work on a potential feasibility study, which I know has been discussed. So a motion is here, it's also in your packet. So I'll just go ahead and stop there. Any questions for me?
Mr. Webb, would you go over again the, the date in which the property was established as a historical site? Did you have that in your slide deck? I was taking notes.
Yes. So the marker went up in, I think it was 2019. We, you know, refer to it in our comp plan, the 2021 comp plan, included in the village area, as in kind of in that village area, which I consider to be the, sort of the overlay area. It is not on a, the DHR, there was an application filled out several years ago, but it was not submitted to DHR, Department of Historic Resources, which would then get on the state and the potentially federal registry. But as I see, that's sort of independent from our own zoning, you know, ordinance.
I don't recall if you were here for this, but in 2024, we, we reviewed a CIP request. And then that request was for demolition. Talked about the three wings, talked about one that was, there was so much damage that they recommended demolition, but there was also two wings that were recommended that could be rehabbed, you know, rebuilt, what have you. Do you have, by chance, is that still, is that still in some sort of active plan or any type of study that we've been given recently?
My understanding and discussions with, I think it was Duberry that did that, and maybe Mr. Hagie might have a few more comments on that.
Sure, yeah, I can take that. I'd be happy to take that one. Yeah, so when the, the conversation around the Pocahontas Landmark Center started, we were really looking at the building in terms of the lens that was being applied, which was the building is in disrepair. What is the, what is the most cost effective way to address the issue? And if we're applying a lens of just cost, then demolition was the cheapest way to address the issues, the deterioration of the building. But as we learned more about the building, the lens shifted to, is there a return on investment? You know, the county was in need of additional square footage. We had a building. As a bonus, it had historical significance to the county. So we started asking the question, could we rehabilitate existing square footage for cheaper than we could build comparable square footage new? And the answer to that question, at least preliminarily from Duberry, is yes, that the county would be able to do that. I think that, at the same time, originally, we were looking at the condition of the buildings and assuming that there was a health and safety component that prevented the buildings from being rehabilitated. And there, I think that Duberry was saying, they took a very, very high level overview of the Pocahontas Landmark Center to really give us a comprehensive assessment of the building, would take a different level of engineering investment, which we started calling a feasibility study.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Webb before we move to the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a presentation by the school? No? Okay. Just checking. All right. Well, if that's the case, we'll open up the public comment period for this hearing. If you're going to come forward, please state your name, and you'll have three minutes for an individual or five minutes for a group. Please make sure that all your comments are directed directly to the board and not the audience.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I used to go, I did have, I went to middle school. I also went to Head Start in the school, and I don't like the, I don't want you guys to, I don't want them to bulldoze the Head Start house, and I don't want them to bulldoze this building. There's too many memories. Now, I have a proposal. We can save this school. There's funding that can raise millions of dollars to fix this school in one shot. There's a, there's a federal, there's a state grant program that the school department, the Virginia Department of Education has, which can easily raise the 10, the $10 million or more needed, easily 10, 5 million, $10 million needed to fix this school up. The grant application cycle for it will open up either at the end of February or March. And this program has existed for several years, and the city of Richmond got 30, $34 million from it, and Danville schools have also gotten a lot of money from it, too. Powhatan has never applied for this grant program, and originally, I learned about the grant program because I wanted to try to find Powhatan County $6 million to replace the roof on the high school. This grant program is sitting there, and it's waiting to help us. What you supervisors need to do is you need to defer this project, you need to defer the demolition a couple of months because we need an engineering study or blueprint. The grant program would look very favorable if Powhatan had a copy of blueprints about fixing up these buildings. These buildings don't look that bad. I mean, I've seen a lot worse buildings, and I've seen a lot worse houses that have been fixed up, but these schools don't really look like a horror show. And there is, there is a major grant program that could easily raise $10 million to fix this, this school that's in terrible, that needs repairs. It exists, we just got to defer these, this, we just got to defer bulldozing the school and get a feasibility study of blueprints to fix the schools into the new community center.
Thank you.
Tammy C, District One. All right. Good evening here tonight. I stand here tonight with many citizens of the county who strongly wish that you do not approve the permit to bulldoze our historical landmark. This place is not just a collection of buildings, it is part of our shared history, our shared story, and a piece of who we are as a community. Please don't treat this landmark like puzzle pieces, picking apart the sections that you think matter and disregarding the rest. To us, the people who live here, every piece of it matters. Whether a building was original or added later, it all belongs to the history of this land and the generations who went to school here. Three school board members do believe that not all parts are historic and want to destroy it, but that is not how most of us feel. To this county, the whole property, every inch of it is historic. Please do not honor the permit for demolition, protect this landmark, preserve our history, and let future generations see the story we are entrusting to keep. Our county is going to go bankrupt because of the school's wrongdoings. When, as a county, you should work together to save history and taxpayers' money, so why is the school so hell bent on keeping this circus going when they rely on you for school funding? I have the answers to keep Sands Anderson in business.
I'm representing the Brooklyn Estates Home Owners Association. I'd like to request five minutes. Thank you. I was going to deliver my comments at the next joint meeting of the county board and the school board, but since this topic is on today's agenda, I'm delivering it this evening. I'll begin with a few facts to set the stage, and then conclude with some thoughts. Fact number one. Most recently, the OECD, which stands for the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, they have a program for international student assessment, or PISA, showed U.S. students ranked 16th in science and 34th in math among 81 countries, but ninth in reading, placing them above the international average in reading and science, but below average in math. U.S. student performance on PISA tests has declined in recent years, with math scores dropping significantly since 2018. There is no, or there is not enough granularity in the PISA assessment to see where Powhatan students rank. Fact number two. I'll give you a few names from the world of business, a field I know well, and these names may be familiar to you. Sundar Pichai, CEO of Google and its parent Alphabet. Elon Musk, CEO of Tesla, SpaceX, and Twitter. Satya Nadella, CEO of Microsoft. Roberto Goizoto, former CEO of Coca-Cola. Alan Belda, former CEO of Alcoa. Indran Nui, former CEO of PepsiCo. Arvind Krishna, current CEO of IBM. Steve Jobs, founder and former CEO of Apple. Liam Kellin, former CEO of Mentos Perfetti Van Mel U.S. So with one exception, they all have something in common, that being immigrants to the U.S. from India, South Africa, Cuba, Brazil, Ireland. The one exception is Steve Jobs, whose father was an immigrant from Syria. So what is the point of these facts? Quite simple. Education is strength and is a major foundation for future success. As I see it, the core function and responsibility of the school board and the superintendent is to create this foundation by educating students, striving for academic excellence, and preparing for success in a global economy while instilling curiosity, motivation, and discipline instead of a sense of entitlement. Powhatan's population has doubled in the 28th years that I have lived here, while public school enrollments and market share have declined due to competition from private and parochial schools and homeschooling, driven by dissatisfaction with the public schools, where money alone will not resolve all issues. The school board chair has stated that the issue of demolishing, or demolishing the portions of the landmark center has received significant time and energy from the board. Inquiring minds would like to know if that investment of time and energy devoted to the school's core mission would have resulted in better student outcomes. Personally, I fail to see how spending time and energy on issues such as demolishing or salvaging the landmark center supports the school's core mission or is of any benefit to the students. I would strongly suggest that the school board and superintendent focus their time and energy on its core function and responsibility, that of producing well-educated, high-achieving students, and not on empire building, protecting turf, and satisfying personal egos. Both the current and prior school boards have clearly demonstrated a lack of knowledge, skills, abilities, or competencies, as well as a failure of leadership by neglecting to manage facilities in the past, leading to the current poor and unsafe conditions. To the school board, I say, do your primary job, do it well, and make Powhatan proud. As the final decision makers, I urge the county board to vote against demolition of a historically significant building, but study if it can be repurposed to fit under the space planning sub priority of the county's current strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Lipscomb, and I will be speaking on behalf of the Powhatan African American Cultural Arts Museum.
You can have five minutes, that's fine.
Thank you. As president of the Powhatan African American Cultural Arts Museum, I'm here to speak about the demolition of some of the buildings in the Powhatan school complex. Just to lay a little bit of historical facts, and some of you may have already known this, but while I was conducting historical research for the museum, I know a little bit about Powhatan's history, but I was so proud to learn even more. I discovered that Powhatan County was at the risk of following a similar path as Prince Edward's schools, of closing down for five years because they didn't want to integrate. But in August of 1962, a lawsuit, Bell versus Powhatan, was filed to challenge the county's consideration of closing its schools to avoid integration. In 1963, a court ruling prohibited Powhatan County from enacting any such plan. The county appealed the decision, prompting an unusual session in which five judges from the Fourth Circuit Court, from the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals convened to hear the case, more than the standard three, due to the case's potential to set a far reaching precedent beyond Powhatan and even beyond the Commonwealth of Virginia. Ultimately, the court ruled that Powhatan schools could not be closed, and ordered that the admission of three black children to the county's previously all white elementary school. But then, that's the historical part. From a financial perspective, the demolition of this historically significant building does not serve the best interest of Powhatan County residents. Numerous construction, construction professionals have affirmed that the structure is restorable despite portions being in poor condition. The current plan proposes demolishing half of the complex, buildings with an assessed value estimated, from what I've read, between 1 million and 5 million, which would not only erase a valuable asset, but also incur an additional 1 million in demolition costs. What will remain is a parcel of lane valued at approximately 100,000 to 250,000. In contrast, preserving and rehabilitating the existing structures, many of which have strong foundational integrity and undeniable historical value, could cost significantly less than new construction, which would require millions in taxpayer dollars. Restoration offers a physically responsible and culturally meaning alternative. History shows that Powhatan County has repeatedly made the choice to preserve and rehabilitate other aging facilities, such as the old courthouse, the war memorial building, and the former elementary and high schools. These buildings, too, face structural issues like mold and asbestos and deterioration. Preserving this building, these buildings safeguards not only an important chapter of Powhatan's history, but also the legacy, the stories, and the identity of the community. By choosing restoration over demolition, we can offer future generations a richer narrative, one that honors our past while building a more thoughtful and inclusive future. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Taylor, 3838 Mapuche Trail. Colleague of mine last month asked, I think, a significant question, and that is, why are we here? So I just want to address the procedure that we're going through here, just kind of asking the question, why are we here? Unanimous decision by both boards 17, 18 months ago to move toward demolition, money borrowed and appropriated, interest currently being paid on loan for money borrowed to pay. do the work, contract signed last spring with a company to do the work. Company, in conjunction with school board staff, applied for the permit for the demolition. After the offer from the board of supervisors was rejected, school board was informed that the PLC is now part of a historic overlay district, requiring the process we're participating in tonight and have been for the last couple of months. There is, however, no evidence the property is actually zoned within a historic overlay district. There's nothing official about that. There's, however, also no ordinance setting forth a structure as a historical landmark within this established historic overlay district, requiring the prerequisite to the demo permit being granted. Neither their property nor their structures identify are identified as a historic resource in the 21 comprehensive plan. They're also not identified on the historic register, as was mentioned this evening, within the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. The highway marker that was pointed out earlier on the road carries no truce, historical significance or official significance. Anyone can apply for that. Any organization can apply for such a thing. So again, why are we here in this procedure, going through this process? If these items mentioned were a reality, then we would have a reason for this public hearing, we'd have a reason for the vote that's about to take place. But instead, we're operating, you're operating, outside of your own ordinances. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Crockett. I live at 5608 Cartersville Road. We're here tonight because of community resistance. We don't like what's happening.
Can you address the board?
Yes, okay, we're here tonight because of community resistance. The community doesn't like what's happening. I actually came to spoke to speak a little bit about Bell versus Powhatan as well. I graduated from Virginia Randolph Community High School, which is a historical school in Henrico County. That campus, they converted the original schoolhouse, the one-room schoolhouse, into a museum, and the students attend classes around the museum. Please protect this history, deny the permit, and open a door to restoring Pocahontas for the good of the entire community. Black history in particular is not meant to separate us or sow division. Its purpose is to is the opposite. We make a space to understand the racial differences of the past, and when we are honest and open with this learning, we open all kinds of doors to build relationships and to honor and respect each other in ways that move everyone forward. Thank you.
Andrew Sneed. I'm a resident at 3710 Maidens Road, Powhatan, Virginia. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Powhatan branch of the NAACP. Gay Harrison presents, so I could get five minutes, please?
Yes, sir.
First, we, the NAACP, would like to thank you all for your time and dedication and your committed commitment to the county. We appreciate it, and having the opportunity to speak to you is a great pleasure for us. We are asking you to vote no on the demolition. When we look back, we've been a part of this since 2016, and there the county, the schools, and the NAACP met and decided the future of the building. Schools took the old central, I mean, excuse me, the old Pocahontas High School and made that their central office. Parks and Rec took the gymnasium and the fields. The NAACP took the foyer. We did this, we had nothing but harmonious relationship. We got through this process with no problem. Now, there was discussion of what are we going to do with the other buildings? Was put on the back burner. Now, to be honest with you, such things came up like critical race theory, every meeting, that's all people talked about. And others, and then we had, obviously, COVID. And when COVID came in, that took precedence over everything and how to get kids back in schools. So therefore, it got on the back burner. Since that time, we've had at least several different boards, two different sets of leaders, both in the county and the schools. So the traction that we had started in 2016 lost its momentum. Now we're here today. Now, I will be honest, I am so concerned about the health and safety of everyone, especially those school board members, I mean, school members who work in that building. I'm concerned about their health and safety. So that is a deep concern of the NAACP. However, we have seen unbelievable community participation regarding this building. The sentimental value of this building cannot go unnoticed. I know you have a job of making sure you do what's logical, reasonable, responsible, accountable, but also do it with a lens of empathy and feelings. People who've never participated in the government are participating in the government now for to save this building. I'm asking you, we are asking you to obviously delay this process, go through, but you know what? There are some wins in this. Win number one, we know we are space restricted in Powhatan County. Right now, if you try to sign up for a room at the library, it's every day we're competing with everyone else. We have an opportunity using this building, repurpose, renovate, to have building space. Powhatan is changing. The young man said earlier, Powhatan is changing. We're getting more people, but we're getting older. So the older communication, I'm sorry, seniors, I don't want to say older, seniors, and the seniors need places to be and have things to do. We don't have outside the school, so we don't have places for us to have meetings and/or any other type of educational opportunities. So allowing us to repurpose this buildings gives us an opportunity to win, win, win. Cost reduction, a place, and then, again, I don't want to ever not tell you how important it is to the African-American community, this building. People would tell me how much they put, how much effort they put in it, their heart, their soul. And even though it's not the original building, it is the original elementary school. And people look at, as you've heard all of these other speakers speak about how they, it's a sense of pride. Now, I look around the state. Every community that had these schools have found a way to do it. They were deliberate and intentional. They found a way to do it. I'm asking you, now, I'm asking you, we can't delay this. This has to be on the front. Because again, speaking about the health and safety, I want the health and safety of those school personnel to be significantly considered. However, in my tenure, I worked at a place where we had a significant fire. The building burned nearly down. However, the community said, we're going to rebuild. And they rebuilt that school. And several weeks ago, Fox Elementary opened up again. So don't tell me that we can't do what we want to do. Thank you all very much.
Hello, I'm Natalie Fleming, 2980 Huguenot tree. Save Pocahontas. Demolishing Pocahontas School would be a significant setback for our community, causing division and hindering progress. The current issues would be, sorry, would be pale in comparison to the detrimental impact of such a decision. This situation is reminiscent of a historical promise of 40 acres and a mule. My ancestors played a crucial role in fundraising for the construction of Pocahontas School, and I firmly believe that destroying this landmark would be destruction to our collective heritage. This school has long been a symbol of unity within our community. Do we generally wish to create divisions within our county? Pocahontas School should be treasured as a county asset, housing the Christmas mother and offering complimentary meeting spaces for various groups, including Girl Scouts troops, small church groups, cheerleading board meetings, et cetera. Ideally, Pocahontas should belong to the Powhatan people, reflecting our "one county, one team" motto. I acknowledge that some individuals may not fully comprehend the significance of this building. I understand that some of you never have had the opportunity to attend the school and therefore may lack the sentimental connection that others possess. I just want Powhatan to wake up and let us unite and save Powhatan School.
My name is Kathleen Patrick Hertzler. I live on Millquar Road, Powhatan. Been a resident of Powhatan for all of my life, except for six months after I got married, but moved back very quickly when the opportunity struck. Powhatan has renovated so many old buildings. This is where I went to high school. That's where I went to elementary. They're both very, very functional. All of the buildings in the courthouse square. And this is an important school as well. It may not be a certified historical, but it is historical to us in Powhatan and is very important for the black community that lives here as well. And it's important that we at least try to find out more information about demolition. Please, just please don't demolish it until there's further information about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Brown. I've never attended the school as far as being a student. I've walked that property many a times, and I feel the spirits of those that worked hard to create this school. I'm looking at the education that Powhatan offers the students now, and it's so inferior that if you went to any store and a student is a cashier in there, they can't even add or divide or subtract. You can give them a $20 bill and the change, and they don't know the change unless that cash registers states the change that's supposed to be given. You're more interested in destroying a piece of property than you are of the education of our future generations, and that is crying shame. We are the United States, and we must learn how to be united, not divided, not always tearing down this group and building up this group. We are united, and we need to show forth that uniting. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Coleman, and I live in District One. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of me and many of my peers. We've all seen images of the inside of the landmark center, and to be honest, we all think it kind of looks like Chernobyl. And we'd rather see the money be invested into the students of Powhatan than just restoring a building that, to be honest, does not look the same as it did when it was originally built. So many of students at Powhatan, we all believe that, or we'd rather see the money go into the students of the future than restoring this building. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Miranda. I was really excited when I saw the young gentleman get up, and I thought he was going to speak on behalf of not demolishing it. So I was pretty sad when I saw that, because we all know, even though the money should go back into the school to teach the children, we all know that's not going to happen. So, and I've been in front of this, in this county forever, born here, and I've seen the board of supervisors, so many go back and forth, school board changes and stuff like that. And you guys have a lot of power in this position right now. And I know some are, like, straddling the fence about what they want to do. So I know for a fact that there's several things that have come before you guys that have been put on hold and deferred for three years. And in this situation, I would think this could be one of them, too. And if you deferred this for at least three years, it would be a chance for a new board, for the school board to change. Maybe they would consider selling it back to the county, and we wouldn't have all this discord. So you guys have a lot of power here. You can say yes, no, or defer. And you can continue to defer it until all of the information is gathered, all of the things that you need to make the right decision, or until positions change, another election comes, and new board members are put there. I do not believe anybody's going to resign, but they can be voted out, and a new mindset can come on board and agree that your offer to buy the property and take your offer, and then you all would be in charge of it, and everyone here, well, I wouldn't say everyone, the majority here would be able to get their wish. So I'm just asking you all to consider that. I'm sure some are on the board, on the ledge or whatever. Ron always says I mess up those sayings, so whatever, whatever this thing, the saying is, I'm sure you guys are, some of them, you guys are weighing it, and you don't know what to do, because you want to make everybody happy. But you have the power to defer it if you don't want to stand and say, I want to, I want to tear it down, or I want to make it stay, or just defer it and give us time. And then the next time when it comes up, you get some more information, defer it again. I know you can do it. I've seen it. And I ask you to do that if you cannot decide not to demolish it.
I don't have a normal three-page thing to read like I normally do when I come to the podium, so this will be quick. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. And when I heard the gentleman voice his list of things of why we're here, what I didn't hear him list was the code of conduct and the oath he took in representing constituents at the board. And oftentimes, leaders don't realize that they've made the wrong choice for their constituents when they've made it. And then, once they realize it, they're knee-deep or chest-deep, can't budge, because they can't admit when they're wrong. I believe that this is one of those times, that we have more of pride in the way than it really is what this litany of things that he listed of why are we here? I think it is important that everyone on the board remembers their oath of who they're representing. I think it's important that you all think about that when you're sitting there in your chair, saying, not, what would I do? Because that's not the question. Like he asked, why are we here? We are here so that you can represent the people. And I hope that as you consider representing the people, we know that everybody can't be happy. But we do know when we spend money, we don't spend it. Well, I'll leave that alone. Remember your oath. Remember who you're representing, and remember, it is not yourself. Put your pride and ego aside and look at it objectively when it comes to the constituents here. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
I'm Elmore Cook, 2827 Red Lane Road. I would make my shot tonight because I've already presented with you before for the school board, the planning commission, so I'm running out of new ideas. But however, it's a petition that's going around that's got more than 1,000 people that are concerned about this demolition permit. They do not want it. We find very few people, as you can notice tonight, one or two people come talking about supporting demolition permit, mainly the school board. But there's a lot of people in this county who not want to see this building torn down because they think it can be restored and used for other purposes. So I urge you to deny this permit and find a useful thing for this building. Thank you.
Anybody else? Not seen anybody? We will close the public hearing for this, public comment period for this hearing. Open it up to board for comments.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Can I start it off?
Start it off.
All right. Been waiting on this. Thanks to everybody that spoke tonight. It was, everybody's very good. Like I said, I've been waiting on this. I'm reading, I had a lot of stuff in my brain, so I had to put it on notes. There's no way I could remember it all. Been waiting for this and I'm, and I'm ready. It's no secret where I stand. I'm a firm no tonight. I'll be a firm no tomorrow. I'll be no next week and for years to come when it comes to demolishing this county asset. For years, the public was misled. They were told that these buildings could not be saved. That was not true. We now know differently and as someone who works with these buildings like this every single day, I know the cost, I know what it takes, and I know these buildings can in fact be saved and used for the benefit of the citizens of Powhatan. This all came to light when the school board asked the Christmas Mother to leave. That decision forced people to look closer. And now, instead of listening to the citizens and preserving a community landmark, the school board majority is pushing demolition. I went to school there. See a couple of my classmates out here in the audience tonight. So went to school there, I walked those halls. I know firsthand what has placed beans to our people and I cannot believe we're here tonight because three school board members refused to turn over remaining parts of the PLC complex to the county. Over 1,000 citizens have spoken with one voice. The media is covering this. There are, there are saved Pocahontas signs around the county. The people do not want demolition. I do not want demolition. Let's remember the facts. The chair agreed to give the BOS 60 days to conduct their due diligence, but within two weeks, she went back on this agreement and the item was pushed on the May school board agenda. That resulted in a 3-2 vote to demolish. Then in June, they blamed the BOS and claimed they didn't have enough information from us, even though it was all discussed at their May meeting and even published in their own school board recap. And let's not forget the planning commission meeting. The comments made there by the school board chair and by the superintendent were misleading at most, at best. They told a story that was not quite complete. This isn't just demolishing a brick and mortar. It's about demolishing public trust. And here's something else. There are grants, like Mr. Swindeman said, there are grants that are available to help with renovation and even asbestos abatement in these buildings. My own son works in county government and he applies to these types of grants all the time. Funding is out there if we want to just go out there and look. One other thing, if we do vote to deny this, I would like to ask our attorney, could we take the money that was appropriated for the stimulation and put it back into CIP? If that's possible. And meanwhile, the Christmas Mother program forced out of this building still needs a permanent home. That tells you everything you need to know about the misplaced priorities driving this demolition. And I may be very clear, this is bigger than someone wants to admit. Citizens are circulating petitions already asking for resignations. Others are working on recall campaigns. The school board majority does not realize how serious this is or how deeply they are breaking the trust in the community. Enough is enough. County deserves the better. Now I'm going to close. This is the last time I'm speaking on this, so to my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. McClung, thank you for a down-to-earth and honest appraisal of the situation we face. I, I share your sentiments. I didn't walk the halls there, but I do share your sentiments and those buildings absolutely must be saved. There are, there are many, many reasons for that. Chief amongst them is, has been well-spoken to tonight from the audience and echoed by Mr. McClung. I need to express some confusion, I think, in terms of maybe facilitate some discussion amongst us. We have three possible actions that we can take. One is to approve the demolition, which I think we've made very clear that that's not going to be supported, or at least I'm not going to support it. The other two are to deny and defer. And the question I would ask is that if we vote to deny, what does that say about giving us the necessary time to do the analysis, to seek the other grants, to bring the engineers back in, to give us more definitive studies that will tell us exactly what the cost would be, not only to refurbish, but also repurpose, making it clear that those are two different things? We could make the building habitable and it wouldn't be repurposed without additional investment. And so there's, there's cost there. If we defer, I'm concerned with the deferral period and whether our colleagues on the school board would be receptive and amenable to a deferral that can last up to six months that would be necessary to seek some of the grants that Mr. Swindeman has mentioned and also to do the necessary engineering studies. So I'm concerned with the deferral period, which I don't think we've defined here in any of the conversations we've had. And if we, if we defer, let me create a hypothetical. Let's say we defer and we do the studies and the cost comes back at a prohibitive level beyond the capacity of the county to fund it without a tax increase, which none of us here are supportive of, and I suspect neither are you in the audience. But I don't have that information right now to make an intelligent decision about what to do, other than, yes, they need to be saved. They need to be saved. I'm, I'm just, just want to mention the fact that there is a number out there that could be beyond our means, beyond our means. And the more we delay, the worse those buildings are going to get. They're not, they're not going to rehabilitate themselves. So I have, I would like to talk about the deferral versus deny. If we defer and the amount of time is adequate to do the necessary study, we still have the, the ability to deny. But if we deny, I don't see how we can do the studies that we, that we've heard that we need to do. Can, can you help me with that in terms of what your thinking is?
So, so if you defer, if you, if you put a six-month time on it and you say we want to, we want to flush out the, the options for...
And seek grants or whatever.
Yeah, flush out the options for, for grants and, and different, different options for trying to do different facility studies, things like that. If you, and you get that, those numbers back, then you reevaluate whether you're going to deny or approve or defer again. So I think it really kind of...
But if we deny, excuse me, but if we deny now, we've taken away any flexibility we have.
I don't believe that.
Well, okay, that's why I wanted to talk about it.
I, I, there comes a time when you got to pick a hill you die on. I look around this room and he asks why we're here. I'm here because of those people out there. And, you know, sometimes...
I hope you're not, I hope you're not implying that I'm not.
I'm making my statement, Robert, not implying anything that you're saying.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's no implication there.
But I am, I, I, we have given the school board opportunity after opportunity after opportunity. We gave them 90 days, they started down a path after three weeks. Do you think if we defer this, it's going to stop there? I don't think so. This is a hill I'm willing to die on. I don't base something historically on a document or an ordinance. I base it on what the people of this county look at it as. If you go back and look at the White House, the White House was built prior to 1800. Okay? The British came in, they burned it down around 1812. It's been expanded since then, but if you take away any of those expansion, it reduces the historical significance of that building. That's where I come from. So if you want to vote to defer, that's your right. I will not be in that camp. I will vote to deny and then start down the path of these studies to see if we get to the point where it's economically feasible.
I don't disagree with you, but so if we deny, that does not preclude us from doing the studies, is what I hear you saying?
Correct. I, I do not believe so, but I would refer to our county attorney for that question.
I don't think it's a legal question, it's whether you want to spend the money to do that and...
Well, some things you can't...
Well, if, if Mr. Kenny is correct and we deny, but it does not preclude us from doing those studies and reevaluating our position, is that what I hear you saying?
If, if we deny, I, we still need to look into keeping these buildings. And I can't add anything to anything what these folks said tonight. Everybody had phenomenal points. I've lived in this county for almost seven years now and I can't, I'm amazed every time people show up at a meeting and come up with ideas and, and express their feelings on what something actually means to them. So I do, I do not believe that we cannot find a path forward that will restore at least a couple of these wings.
If, if I may.
I'm, I'm, excuse me.
Sure.
I, I don't disagree with you. I don't, I want to save the buildings, period. End of story, bottom line. I'm just asking the question, if we deny, does that preclude us from doing the studies? And you're saying you don't think it does?
Think it does.
I don't think it does either.
Okay.
Look, let's just say you get a grant or you do your, your study and you say, okay, well, we feel like we could get this job done for X amount. You still have to deny the permit and then you have to turn around and go, go back to the school board and say, we feel like we can get this done for this amount. Guess what you still have to do? It's their building. You still have to get permission from them to do the work. We don't own it, regardless what happens if you defer it.
Mr. Chair, but you know who does own it? The citizens of Powhatan County.
Citizens of this county. Based, based, based on that answer and with good counsel from Mr. McClung and Mr. Kenny, I too am firmly in the camp of denying his...
Just, just wanted to flush that out for you there.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's, that's the reality of it. We still, regardless of what, what options we come up with, even if we defer it, we still have to come back and we still have to try to convince three, three of their five that it's worth it. We've, the countless things that we've done over and over and over again, nothing seems to work. Zero compromise. Go ahead.
This building is in District Five and I am the District Five Supervisor. My children went to that school. I'm going to do whatever can be done to keep that school home.
I yield the floor back to you.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to deny the resolution R-2025-64 and the school board's request to demolish the Pocahontas Landmark Center.
Second.
Take a real call vote.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Morissette.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kinney.
Aye.
Chairman Denati.
Aye.
Five oh. That ends our public hearing, county attorney comments.
No comments, Mr. Chair.
County administrator comments.
No comments.
Any additional board comments?
Have one.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, one of the first things I voted on when I, they got approved, when I became supervisor was to get the Holly Hills Turn Lane going. So it finally started in the past couple of weeks. So it shows you how long it takes to get to that point, but yeah, so that's, that's all I had to say. Yeah, yeah. It'll be quick.
We need, you want to read us in?
Sure. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to convene and close meeting in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.23711A7 for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, whereas such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, including but not limited to Tri-Hope Life Ministries at all versus Powhatan County, and need that in form of a motion.
Make a motion.
Becca.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ready, please. I'm meeting back to order. Okay. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23712D. To the best of your knowledge, where only such public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and those matters that were identified in the closed meeting motion, heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting. Mr. Denati.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Powers. Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Morissette.
Aye.
Five oh. Okay.